For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
Present.
Ingalls.
Here.
King. Mayor Philkins.
Here. And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. We'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. That would be greatly appreciated, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on December 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries. This evening, we do have two public hearings, so at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Marcus, to present the first one.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. This has been an item in front of council and the Planning Commission now for quite some time. The first public hearing is with regard to short-term rentals. All that this is doing is codifying the current interpretation of short-term rentals in the city as it is currently documented through our community development director. For just a little bit of context, City Council, I'll say, two to three months ago, directed city staff to simply codify the memorandum from our development director that has been on the books now for a couple of years. We have gone through that process by going to the Planning Commission, having a public hearing there. Their recommendation unanimously was to move it forward to City Council, which is where we're at tonight. And so tonight culminates the public process in terms of this item with the public hearing this evening, asking if folks have anything they wish to share with us. Following the public hearing, City Council then may take action. And again, all that this is doing is codifying the current interpretation of the short-term rental policy that we have documented on our website. It's our intention, after we get through the overall zoning code updates, which that in and of itself will take at least a couple of months, if not longer, to do, to come back and revisit this. I would say probably springtime would be the earliest, likely sometime in the summer. It'll go back to the Planning Commission for conversation and discussion and public hearing, and then back to City Council for more conversation, discussion, and a public hearing before any official action takes place. And so there are no changes being recommended this evening in terms of our current practice. If there are going to be any changes, that'll be something that will happen months from now. So.
So can we just clarify? I don't think that I heard you say it, that it's being codified, but it's not being codified in R1 and R2 at this time.
Correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yep. John, can you rattle off the districts?
It will be in the B1, B2 business districts, and the TS1 and the TS2 tourist service districts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead then and open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing.
I'm Andy Van, also 2005, Sunnyside Drive. You know, they had an article in the paper on Thursday about Vine Street and how how nice it is down there where the neighbors rely on each other. There's no short-term rental there. I read that and I thought, how would that be if there was a short-term rental? Would they let their dogs go door-to-door to everybody's house? Would the kids still be playing capture the flag all night? And, you know, that would change the character of that neighborhood. And then I look at it and I go, there are three ex-city employees that live on that street. And this is what we want. We want that protection from the zoning. That's what we're asking for. And, you know, from earlier this year, we have the one that says, I feel like Sunnyside is under attack. That's not what we want. So, I mean, as we codify this, we have come full circle to say what we should be doing from two years ago. So here we are. We should do what we're doing. And then the scary part is when Marcus is talking about the ultimate direction of short-term rentals will ultimately be decided at a later date. The whole idea of the codification that Steve King presented and was passed unanimously was to say, these are the areas that we're willing to accept these short-term rentals in. It's not a matter of the zoning changes, it's a matter of the zoning map staying the same. Where they're allowed today is where they should be allowed in the future. My recommendation would have some sort of a moratorium on adding short-term rentals anywhere outside of those districts. So, and of course, I've got a lot more to say, but that's all I've got for now. So, thank you.
Hello. I'm John Sari, 201 Eriquoy. And I really want to say the city needs housing. We need it badly. And they should encourage all types of housing, not discourage it. You know, from condos to granny flats. Fonzie living above the garage. You know, we need all the type of housing we could get, not turning them down. Temporary or long-term, it doesn't, they're all needed. The few complaints we've received over the years regarding temporary housing is an indication how successful they are. They really aren't a problem. The few complaints that we've been received have been public nuisance or parking problems. Police action responding to public complaints should address public nuisances, and using the special land use permit process should address density and parking problems. The city zoning ordinance has addressed temporary housing for a long time with tourist homes and tourist cabins. And they're all limited to just the four zones. But I think they should be expanded to include all zones. And if you've got public nuisances, that's what you've got the police department for. How many times have we been knocked on the door for parties we had as teens to quiet it down? We could do that. We'll park over here instead of over there. It just needs to be enforced, and I think we should allow all types of housing throughout the city.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and open it up for any council discussion, questions?
You know, I want to talk a little bit about the process because, you know, when we began to take on the big rezoning and we tried to talk about it with the public, you know, the short-term rental issue became the overriding topic of conversation. And I think in separating these, it allows us to do two things. When we move on with the rezoning process, we can talk about all the important things that people need to have explained to them, all the important things, all the changes in there. And we can have a simple answer for the people who are concerned about short-term rentals. And that will be, you know, is the map changing as it pertains to short-term rentals from what it was before? And where are we expanding that use? That's a much simpler, direct question than, you know, when we had the memo, we had the current zoning, when we were trying to explain that. So I think this will bring a lot of clarity to step two. It'll allow us to provide simpler answers. I also think, you know, for me personally, I think there are several reasons for being opposed to short-term rentals or not allowing short-term rentals. Protecting our neighborhoods and the feel of those neighborhoods is important. Protecting our housing stock. Like you said, the Fonzie, you know, the mother-in-law apartments above the garages, these are all things that are needed. But short-term rentals, when you take a single-family residence and turn it into a home that's not for a family, you're removing a house from the housing stock. And I think when you look at the problems the other communities have up north, some of it just stems from that, you know? The sheer fact that the houses are disappearing and being used for things other than families. So I definitely, you know, I support this. And going forward in the next process, I think this will help us focus on some of the things that people need to have explained to them when the zoning changes and allow us to have a simple answer for the short-term rental. People are concerned about short-term rentals. So I definitely support this.
Thank you.
I've got one question, something that, something that, I don't know, I thought raised a bit of a red flag, which is in the B2 district, John, they're going to be permitted by special use permit?
Yeah, again, we were asked to write something up that reflected the memo. And the memo does have it in special use permit. So we changed virtually nothing in this codification process from the memo. That's how the interpretation was made off of the existing zoning ordinance.
I see a problem possibly because if special use permit, somebody puts in a permit and they're allowed to have one there, somebody two houses down isn't allowed, you've got a problem.
Doesn't this make the B2 district more restrictive? Because it's allowed, as you would say, by right in the other three districts you mentioned. And we're being slightly more protective of the B2 because we've decided that if you want to have a B2, you have to put in an application.
Right.
But in the other three, and this is based on, like you said, your memo that likened short-term rentals to the boarding houses, and that's how our zoning code currently regulated them.
Yes.
But still, I'm concerned with somebody being, saying, it's okay, but not for you, or you, but you can. I mean, by special use permit, it could raise a red flag.
Well, what we're approving tonight, though, is what we're approving tonight is what the Planning Commission voted to send forward to us. And what was sent forward to us is what we requested. And so it's not changing anything. It's just putting the codification in the districts it's allowed.
And if I may, we're using the abbreviated terms, and honestly, shame on us for doing that. And if you look at the maps that are in front of you, it says, you know, B2 is central business district. B1 is auxiliary business district. TS1 is tourist service district, and TS2 is tourist service district. And so, you know, these are zones that are all primarily commercial slash recreational in nature to begin with. You know, we're not looking at putting any of these in what would be zones characterized or identified as residential zones. And as Mayor Philkins mentioned, the special use permit, or Councilmember Ingalls may have mentioned, the special use permit component to this makes it more restrictive by otherwise, it would have been by right, like was the other recommendations for the other zones. So it makes folks in the B2 have to go through and go through another process if they're gonna, if they're gonna get any kind of conditional license or approval.
So these folks would be adjacent to the business district and also adjacent to residential, possibly. So by putting that other safeguard in, we can make sure that we're not just, people don't just take all the houses just behind Main Street.
Right. Who gets to make the decision to okay the permit or not? Planning Commission. Okay. All right.
Yep. They're the gatekeepers.
I have one more comment, too. So you mentioned, like you said, the zoning discussion is going to be, you know, wrapped up with our current zoning ordinance. And we're gonna move on with probably replicating the same process that we started to do this year with the meetings, trying to explain it to people. We, as a council, are still continuing our discussion of enforcement and getting updates on that and strategies for enforcing our current. That's something we're continuing to work on, right? Because, I mean, we've had Airbnbs. It looks like, you know, they're still out there, they're still rented. When you check the website, you know, I checked the VRBO and Airbnb right before we came in here. And it even looks like, you know, there's one or two that maybe popped up since the summer. You know, I don't know how you missed the, you know, the news in the paper or what investment decision that person was making, but it looks like there, you know, there's a new one there. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, the conversation of enforcement, is that going to be tied in with the latter part of the discussion? Or are we still going to be discussing strategies to get a handle on any other problems that remain?
So unless other staff have received complaints, we have not received any complaints, at least to my knowledge, in quite a while since we sued the couple of properties that were causing the issues off of Sunnyside. So if there are people that are still violating the ordinance, nobody has contacted us directly and filed a complaint for us to then pursue. So if those do come in, we'll certainly go through the process that we did previously, and that never ends. You know, just like with any issue that we have, whether it's a short-term rental-related complaint or a complaint because there's a party that's going on until, you know, the wee hours of the morning and it's disturbing the peace. You know, we'll follow up on it accordingly. So if there are areas that, Councilmember, we should be, you know, going, or, you know, sending letters to or whatnot, feel free to send them my way and we can kick them out the door like we did before. But otherwise, that never changes. If there's a different policy direction council might like us to go in, in terms of how we look at enforcing versus our current practice, which is complaint-driven, that would be something that we would need to discuss. You know, we're currently staffed and the way we operate is really on a complaint-driven type basis. So there is no, you know, sort of right or wrong answer, or, you know, the approach is, it's fluid, for the lack of a better way of describing it. So. I don't know if that helps clarify at all.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So does this in any way, I'm looking at it and I don't want to. Excuse me. We had talked about, like, guidelines, rules and regulations for short-term rentals. We don't have any of that in place at this point, correct?
Correct. This just sets up the legal enforcement of where this use is allowed versus not allowed. As a part of the overall retread that we'll look at doing is when we'll also look at establishing a whole robust program. So.
And I like retread because I was explaining it as, like, at this point, this is like your tire's flat, you patch the tire so you can get to payday and replace the tires.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
Right. And we have received a lot of feedback over this summer, and, you know, even to date. That's not for not. You know, we've got it documented. There's been lots of cool ideas about how we can create a program and whatnot. And we also put forward some of those ideas as a part of our public forums. So we'll be looking at piecing together, you know, a package for the public and the community to discuss when the time is right. So. Can you give us a brief, very brief update on where we are with the two people we sent letters to, the two houses? I would actually need Mike Homier, the city attorney, to do that. Mike, can you give us a quick update on that?
The voice of God.
We see you, but we can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I'm thinking, are we muted? Hold on, Mike.
Mm-mm. I don't think so.
Is the volume up on our end? Anything on the computer? Like, hit the volume button on the computer.
You might have to hit escape to see the button on the bottom for the.
Be up. He's just not saying anything.
No. Can you, all right. Mike, can you say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. So one of the cases, I don't have the case caption in front of me. One of the cases, though, was dismissed. The property sold during the interim after we had filed suit, and the property sold during that time. So the owner that we sued no longer owned it. We, in turn, then sent a follow-up letter to the new owner advising them that it did, that the case was in litigation prior to them buying it and that it may not be used for a short-term rental as indicated by the interpretation of the city posted on the city's website. The other case is still pending. It's in the discovery phase. I think that that case will be resolved shortly, but probably after, immediately after the New Year. At least, that's what we are proposing by way of consent judgment. But my understanding also is that property may also be listed for sale, and so I would expect a resolution to that case as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Okay. So would someone entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt an ordinance to amend to Chapter 46 of the City of Cadillac zoning ordinance to codify interpretation of short-term rental locations.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. This next item also is somewhat of a housekeeping item. City Council, a couple of years ago, extended the tax increment financing ordinance in place for the LDFA area by a couple of years. We've been working with the LDFA authority on basically trying to understand where we're at with regard to how long we have to continue to pump water and keep wells open. We still don't really have any finite or concise information from higher levels of government. Therefore, the LDFA is recommending that we look at extending the TIF plan for another three years, hoping that sometime between now and then, we will have more finite information. And that information might say you have 10 more years to go, or you have 20 more years to go. And then at least we'll know, and we can then put, you know, a proper extension in place. This does not levy any new assessments. That is something that the LDFA is working on and is something that we'll be looking at doing. I would think probably sometime in calendar year 2024. These are assessments on industries that are within the Special Local Development Finance Authority area. That's what LDFA stands for. And again, the purpose of all of this is treating the groundwater. So before you tonight is the recommendation to extend the TIF plan through December 30th of 2026.
And you and Jeff both met with the industry people, so.
Several times.
They've gotten all of the updates that they need.
And the current chair of the Cadillac area industrial group and the Cadillac industrial fund is also a board member of the LDFA, as is a member of our, the president of the chamber. And so we're very well plugged in and integrated. Also, council mentioned about having Jeff come and give a presentation. It looks like we might have a full board, I think, in February. And so we'll have Jeff come and do that at that point. So.
All right. This time, we'll go ahead and open up public comment as it relates to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to any further discussion amongst the council, or if someone would like to entertain a motion.
I thought the paper did a good job covering this issue and the history of it. So that was nice for the Cadillac News to do.
You want to make a motion, then?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the development and tax increment financing plan for the Harry Vander Jack industrial park.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And this evening, we do have one reappointment recommendation?
Yes. Before you have a reappointment of Ann Ingalls to a three-year term on the Cadillac Historic Districts Commission, she would like to be a member again for another three-year term.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Ann Ingalls to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
I'll second it.
Thank her for her service.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And so then that takes us to the city manager's report, and we're gonna talk about our calendar year.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, as this is our last City Council meeting scheduled for the regular calendar year. It is customary that we look at adopting our regular meeting schedule for the next calendar year. And what you have before you accordingly is the proposed schedule, which is essentially that we meet the first and third Mondays of the month at 6:00, unless otherwise noted here in the recommendation. And I'll just quickly go through those notes. The first one is that in January, we have one meeting on Tuesday, January 16th, due to city offices being closed for MLK Junior holiday on the 15th, and of course, due to the proximity of the New Year's holiday and people being gone, not having the meeting in the beginning of the month. In February, the recommendation is to schedule the second meeting of the month for February 20th because of being closed on President's Day. In March, the recommendation is to schedule one regular meeting for the third Monday of March 18th due to the presidential primary election being scheduled on the February 27th date. And so we're looking at moving and not having that first meeting in March. In July, looking at having the meeting scheduled for the third Monday of July 15th due to the Independence Day schedule and holiday. In August, due to the primary election, looking at having the meeting scheduled again just for Monday, August 19th. And in September, having the meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 3rd, due to offices being closed for Labor Day. So.
Is that November, then?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And then in November, scheduling the meeting for November 18th due to the election earlier in the month.
Is this the same thing that we have done?
Every year, with the one exception of the March, February date, and that's because of the special presidential.
It just seemed like there were more.
That's the one difference.
Okay.
Yep.
That we had over one meeting.
And we've always, yeah, and we've always said, too, if there's special elections that come up, we'll actually cancel.
For special meetings.
Yeah, for special meetings. Right.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'd make a motion to approve the calendar year 2024 council meeting schedule as presented. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the last downtown development authority that have been presented to us to review at our own, on our own time. And at that, it takes us to our final public comment for this evening. And at that, it takes us to our final public comment for this evening. So many people and it's so quiet. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and then move to the good of the order, should anyone have anything.
I do. This Wednesday is the regular meeting of the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council. It happens right here. It's at three o'clock Wednesday. And then after that meeting, at that meeting, we're hoping to swear in some new members. And then after that meeting, we're going to Walmart to do bell ringing for the Salvation Army. I don't know how many of you have noticed the big kettle down in the commons area, but Pastor, or...
Greg Bach.
Greg Bach, yeah, the...
Lieutenant.
The lieutenant. I knew I got that wrong. He's camped out there raising money for Salvation Army in this season. And as we know, homelessness is a big, or unhoused homelessness is a big issue for many people. We talk about housing all the time. And there are organizations like the Salvation Army and like others in the community that actually help these people and help with many other things. Not everyone lives an abundant life, and it's good to know that there are good neighbors who put themselves out in the cold to help those who don't have that abundance. So I would encourage everyone to donate, and they still need bell ringer. So there's a website you can sign up to ring the bell for the kettle, you know, like, you don't have to dress in a Santa suit. Although if I had one, I would.
What day and time are you going to be there?
We're going to be there Wednesday from four to six at Walmart.
I might have to stop in.
Please do. Thank you. And that was all.
You need another Big Mouth.
Yeah, come on down.
All right. One quick comment, I met with a concerned taxpayer and citizen, and Adam O'Jevka, you over the noise ordinance, he had a complaint that's been going on for months with Willow and the music. And I know Jason, the owner of Willow, I've been to several concerts. He lives within a half a mile. And I always thought, and I was wrong, that the noise ordinance was 10 to seven, but it's 11 to seven. And his children are getting woken up, they're playing till 11, which is their legal right. It's zoned that way. So he has every right to play till 11. But at the same time, I would not mind in the future seeing that noise ordinance change to 10. They were down Saturday and we were going to go, but I couldn't get off the couch. So that's normal. And they started at 6:30 and they played till 11. And, well, I just see a lot of his point of view when your kids come in the bedroom and say, I can't sleep. So I'd like to have us look at that in the future, but, or I'll send them all to your house.
I can hear the music.
Come talk to you guys. All right, that was my highlight. Thank you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, all that. Did I cover all the bases?
Yeah, Chris Mahanek Kwanzika.
Okay, that too, there you go. Thank you. Got it?
Well, this evening, I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and thank you for having your voices heard, being willing to step forward and come and talk to us and everything that you do for the community and the city staff. And we couldn't do the jobs that we do without the volunteers out in the community and the people who care about this community coming and interacting with us. So thank you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. With that...
One last thing, there is another concert Saturday at the Willow.
Oh, right.
Somebody's daughter.
Yes, and son and all kinds of people.
Yes, indeed, so when does it start?
It's seven to 11.
Jab, jab!
There is no way that you're going to sing every holiday song between seven and 10.
And that's what it is. It's a Christmas whistle.
My husband is playing, too.
Yes.
Oh, good, good, I'll be there. I plan on going.
Rockwell is going to be on the drums, he's the band director. It's a community thing, and it's to raise money for Jam &amp; Bread. And Jam &amp; Bread is an organization that involves youth in the community and helps them. They volunteer, they learn music, they learn music business, they do things with the arts, they do all kinds of wonderful things. And it's just a great organization. So all of the players volunteer their time, and we're talking some world-class musicians there. And all that money goes to support kids in our community who are interested in the arts and culinary arts and music. So come on down.
Be a good time.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.